Madam Mayor, recording has begun.
Thank you very much. It's like the voice from above. All right, it is six o'clock. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order. I'm going to do roll call first. Councilman Goldsmith. Councilman Trolinger.
Here.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Here.
Councilman Jenkins.
Here.
Mayor James, I am here. If you all would please stand and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. An item on tonight's agenda was inadvertently omitted, and I would like to make a motion before we go into our agenda to amend tonight's agenda to include Resolution 22-20 under legislation. Do I have a second?
It's, Madam Mayor, it's an ordinance. That's why we're introducing it first.
Okay, under legislation, did I?
Yes, yes, that's that part.
Okay, okay, so ordinance, not resolution. Thank you for that correction. Take two. How about ordinance 22-15? And I have a second from Councilman Goldsmith. Do I have any discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First item on, or second item now, I guess, on our agenda is the approval of the closed session minutes. I trust you all have had the opportunity to review those, and if I, if you have, I would entertain a motion. Yes? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is, under matters of council discussion, is the annual review of Resolution 21-23. Mr. Manuel?
It's read very gently.
All right. Think I'm live. Yes, much like we reviewed the, or finalized the strategic plan, I wanted to get this document to you as well to see if there were any changes you would like to contemplate for the next, we'll call it, calendar year. But it's really, it'll be done after July 1 every year. We'll do it annually to see if it's, there's anything we'd like to alter within our procedures. I had sort of anticipated, much like the strategic plan, have a two-week comment period, and then we can discuss it maybe in September. So that was the path we were putting this, this on. Of course, there are some items that'll come up later on the agenda, more specifically, the consent agenda and time allocated agenda items that we will also be talking about, which will change sort of our process or our procedure, potentially. So I will open the floor to council.
Mr. Manuel, are there any, under the rules of procedure, any ones that you are highlighting right now that you want us to take a look at? And we can focus our attention on that. Of course, we'll look at the whole document, but any that you have, or Mr. Town Clerk, either one?
I think one of the things we have to ensure is that we are aligned with the rest of our code, so that's something that we, as a staff, will do to make sure that we're not in conflict with, say, a charter provision. So that's something that we'll do within the next two weeks to try to point out any, like I say, conflicts between this, these rules of procedure and our, our town code as a whole.
Any questions on the floor? Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
So, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward three. Mr. Manuel, we attended the 2022 Council Orientation Series, Roles and Responsibilities of the Elected Officials, and that was very informative. Do any of the things that were highlighted in that orientation, are they all represented in this document? If not, I would like to take a look at what they recommended. We operate as a council and town, and make sure that some of those things are in there, and make sure that everything that's in here is, is how we want to be functioning. You know, so I would like to take a look at, you know, this document in comparison to what we were orientated to.
Yes, one item that has come up in the recent past, I think Mayor James about putting a recommendation, a staff recommendation, which is consistent with what you see at the planning department level, with their relationship with the Planning Commission, and that's something that that program that you referenced did discuss is having the staff provide a professional recommendation, and of course, council's job is to see if that works within the political landscape of the town specifically, and how, you know, it may have to be amended to some point, but, you know, it's a case-by-case basis, but that's something we can definitely look to include a, a staff recommendation on matters that come to council for consideration.
Thank you. Any other points, clarification, or questions? Okay, and so please have your recommendations in. Is two weeks' time enough? We'd like to get it on the agenda the second or third week of September.
So that's, we could probably go three weeks.
Okay, three weeks.
So the sixth of, sixth of September.
Okay, so if you could, and, and will they be submitting them to you, Mr. Manuel, or to our Town Clerk?
They can send it to legislative.
Okay, so Craig or to Kelly?
Just a legislative email will go to both of them.
So by September 6, if you have any amendments to this rules of procedure, please have it to legislation, this Legislative Services email, and we will have it on the agenda on probably the second work session in September. All right, fantastic. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, something I think Chief really was the one, Chief Schenner was the first to bring it up. I guess they had utilized the consent agenda in one of his previous employers, and I've worked in different places that have also utilized a consent agenda. I have a handout. I had hoped to get it out to you prior, but I arrived in this building probably 15 minutes before this meeting, so I'm going to pass that out now, which is just a, it's about a two-and-a-half-sheet brief on consent agendas, sort of what they are.
Chief, can I have you sit up here for a sec so we can talk about your experience with consent agendas as well? Should questions arise? Thank you.
Sure.
Brent, do you want to take this, or do you want Chief to explain how it was used in his?
I think we can go over it. Maybe I'll start with this as a sort of guide, and then we can sort of add as we need be. I think the first, what our consent agendas gives you a pretty good idea. To group, consent agenda groups routine meeting discussion points into a single agenda item. In so doing, the coupled items can be approved in one action rather than through the filing of multiple motions. So that's really the main reason. It can, you can have things in there such as minutes. A lot of our procurements, since we have the charter provision that anything over $20,000 must come to council. You know, we're in the middle of ARPA, so there's a lot of monies, there's a lot of procurements that will be taking place that will exceed that $20,000. These are ways, they're already budgeted items, so really you approve it when you approve the budget, and then due to our charter, we have to bring them back to you for a second stamp of approval. Well, those are just a couple of, I guess, examples of items that may be considered for a consent agenda. And I guess the, the most important thing is, is that, you know, as we did tonight, which was unique, we would have to have probably beside a consent agenda will be acceptance of agenda on our, on our agenda, so that council, if a council member finds something within the consent agenda that they would really like to have pulled off the consent agenda and put in for discussion, then you would have the opportunity to do that under, sort of adopting the agenda. So that, that gives you the, because we will still provide all the paper that backs this information, so it will all be before you, so you can review it in advance. And if you're comfortable with it, then the consent agenda can go forward. But like I say, if you find an item on the consent agenda that you may be not comfortable with, think it, you know, warrants more discussion, then the council would have the opportunity to pull that off and put it in a discussion item later on the agenda. So those are, are my sort of familiarity with the consent agenda and sort of the biggest points. But unfortunately, someone who's dealt with them, I kind of feel more comfortable, and I don't, I don't want to take things for granted that in my understanding is reflected upon your understanding. So I would like to, you know, open it up to any questions you may have, and Chief is here, and we can give, you know, I gave two examples being minutes and some of the procurements, that, you know, you could also, and the monthly reports, for example, could also be on a consent agenda. It might be an example of something that you saw in, you know, Director Stahl's report that you would like to pull out to have further discussion on. So that, those are just examples.
Chief, could you please explain how it was used in your prior municipality?
Sure. It was used quite a bit in Greenville. There's a lot, as Mr. Manuel has said. One of the things that I've seen is the town grows. There's going to be more and more business that comes before the council. One thing I really like about La Plata is our council meetings end early. I've been at council meetings that went till 1:00 in the morning before, and usually got the call in my office, 10, 11 o'clock at night, that the police department's business was coming up, and I would drive down to Town Hall. And even with the consent agenda, the, the meetings weren't that long. They had two business meetings a month and three or four work sessions, depending on the month. But it was things like, we discussed Motorola radios, we went through it during the budget process, and that would be placed on the consent agenda. And if any council member wanted to remove it, as Mr. Manuel said, it was pulled from the agenda. Resolutions that you may want to read during a council meeting may stay in there, but the resolution, when you talk about it at the work session, everybody has the opportunity to read it. They go on the consent agenda. Those were the type of things that was on the consent agenda. But there was usually on any given meeting, five to 10 items on the consent agenda.
Questions from council?
Madam Mayor, so I just have one question. So going back to the items that have been approved for procurement on the budget. If the item, so generally when we've done, when we did the budget, they said how much the item was expected to cost, and we approved that, the total purchase for that department. So if the item that they bring forth, like the Motorola radios, and we said about $35,000, and it's within that $35,000, can that be on the consent agenda not to be discussed about the 34? If it was 34 and we approved 35, we don't have to talk about that anymore, because we've already approved it in the budget?
Yes, I would say so, because we're bottom-line budget, so it's one of those scenarios where, you know, the radios may come in 1,000 over, but there may be something else. We have items in our ARPA budget right now that are coming in under, so we will have to reappropriate that money. But in your example, yes, I think we're well within our, our abilities to do that.
So if the radios came in and we budgeted 35,000 and they were 40,000, that would have to come before us, because whether there's other monies or not available, we approved only 35,000. So if it's 40,000, that needs to come before us to be reviewed.
Yeah, I would say so, because in strictest terms, it would require a budget amendment.
So I'm familiar with consent agendas. I have four meetings that actually use them, and they work well, so.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. Just a clarifying question. I think, Chief, you referred to, and thank you for doing this. So when we have a work session and we discuss an item, and we ask questions, and they're resolved, then that would be at the business meeting, or the next agenda could be a consent item. Is that how it's supposed to work?
Yeah, it can very well, because we do have work sessions specifically to discuss those items. And if it's the consent, then we would probably consent of council to move it to the, to the business meeting. Then I would think it would, it would be eligible for the consent agenda. At the same time, it would, council would still have the right to consider pulling that agenda off if they thought it warranted additional discussion.
And the consent agenda would be for all agendas or just business meeting agendas?
I think you can do it both. I'm more familiar with it on business meetings.
Okay.
But, you know, a lot of times, like tonight, is supposed to be a, a work session, if our calendar goes, but it's a special meeting because of different actions we'll have to take up. So under that circumstance, we're strictly a work session, probably not, but if special meeting or Town Council, Business Meeting, I would say yes.
Because again, to stay in the obvious, the work sessions are very effective, because we thoroughly discuss issues, and it seems like once we get past that, the consent, I've been in other organizations where they've used them, and the only issue, obviously, it's still, there's still transparency, and there's still, the public still has ability to, to look at these items as well.
I've worked in localities where they had a committee structure, and people would show up at their business meeting, and they would roll through their agenda, and the mayor would have to, you know, when they're done in 20 minutes, he would have to explain that most of our work is done at the committee level, where a lot of this is talked about and discussed, so that when we get here for a vote, there's not a lot of discussion that takes place, because the discussion took place in a committee room. And that's sort of the same way with our work sessions.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I would like to see, I would like to see us move forward with this. And, and the big reason that I like this too is, once we go through, we take a lot of time to go through the budget and go through each line item before our approval of the budget. And to have, you know, Public Works, or the police, or whomever, come in front of us to ask us for something we already approved, unless there's extenuating circumstances, we've already approved that. And so it's, it's in the interest of time, unless something is, you know, $5, $10,000 out of what was approved. That's when we will see it again, but that's one of the items, and, and especially all of our minutes too. We can read all of our minutes prior than going through each one. Do we need a motion to accept that, or is there consent, or do we just?
Yeah, I would say if you want to consent to the consent agenda, that would be great, and we can start applying it probably next week. It's the will of council.
Would that go into our procedures that we are looking at too?
Yeah, I think so. And also the consistency with our charter, because I think our charter has order of business. So it's all things that we'll work, we'll work through.
Okay. I'm looking for, you know, I've got Councilman Goldsmith, it's a, yes.
Yes, I agree.
Yes, yes, yes. All right, and it is unanimous. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
Anytime.
Time allocated agenda is next on our agenda.
How are we doing?
We are doing, it's 6:40, and it's 6:18. We're doing fabulously. All right, is this you? Is this, oh, it's Town Clerk?
At the request of the mayor, the Town Council meeting agenda currently has time allocated agenda items. We added it last week. This is intended to encourage a focus and meaningful deliberative process while ensuring that council business is conducted with the greatest efficiency possible. As previously established in Resolution 21-23, the presiding officer is responsible for ensuring that the meeting process, according to the agenda, the meeting proceeds according to the agenda. Time slots are, are a means of conducting more effective meetings are presented at the MML Summer Conference. And prior to 2002, the Charles County Commissioners included time allocations for agenda items. So that's what we have so far. I guess if the council wants to continue with this, we can, we can experiment with it for a little while longer, or if you wanted to add it to Resolution 21-23, those are your options.
All right, council, what do you, now, last week was an experiment that I think kind of failed a little bit. And I was at the helm of the ship, and I was sinking fast. But tonight, we are clicking along. I, when I suggested this, I have seen other meetings run effectively this way, that the applicant coming in, or whoever is presenting, knows that they have 10 minutes, 15 minutes to state their, you know, request, or present whatever that is, and then council will have X amount of, of time to respond. I never want to cut it short, as it was quite evident last week, that I did not cut it short and say you only have 15 minutes. But I think it gives everyone some guidelines to know that they are not coming in and taking over a meeting and having an hour to talk about something that really could be discussed in 10 minutes. So that's where the mind thought was on this. There's, as time goes on, we will perfect the, I think, perfect the allocated times. It is questionable on how long we allow, but I want to hear your feedback on what you think, if we should proceed with this. If not, if it's a good idea, if not such a good idea. Go ahead, Councilman Goldsmith.
You used a word I've been thinking about, is guidelines. These are guidelines and not hard and fast. I would not want something that eliminates the opportunity to get the full issue on the table. So guidelines, fine, but we're never always going to follow it. And what the difficulty had last week, you're going to have in the future as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I even think that, you know, that we need to, yeah, what's on the agenda. Make sure that we have allocated an appropriate timeline. I don't think it was, we, we have been with them, them before, and it went forever, so we should have known that it wasn't going to go away that quickly. So I think that if we, you know, when we look at the times that we have on the agenda as guidance, we want to make sure that it's appropriate, like looking at item seven, starting at 7:15 and ending at 7:20. I'm not quite sure that that's going to happen. That's a five-minute span for, you know, to hear the updates. So I think that as long as we have realistic guidelines on the agenda so that we can operate by them, I'm perfectly fine with it.
Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. I think this is a good idea. Like I said, I've seen it in other jurisdictions, smaller and larger than us. And, and it's interesting, when we have folks making a presentation, I, I think it's incumbent that they know they've got X amount of time. And from my past experiences on zoning cases and things, in other jurisdictions, I don't know how to say this correctly, but for those kind of cases, they, at the end of the day, the burden of proof is on them to prove why they need to be approved. So they need to focus on what the criteria is, whether it's in the zoning ordinance, or design guidelines, or wherever it is. And so sometimes they tend to want to stray. And again, I'm not an attorney, but at the end of the day, it, it is about, the burden of proof is on those to, to prove, or document why they should be approved, or why they meet this criteria. And sometimes they tend to want to wander off on all this other stuff, whereas, and, and maybe that's important, and that could be part of a different discussion, but for the, but if they've made application, and it's a hearing, then they need to put their case on. That's my perspective.
And I do, and I.
And then, and then, and then, but that doesn't necessarily mean, at least for me, that after they, they've made that presentation, I'll say we have a chance then to discuss it online as a group.
Absolutely.
So, so I wouldn't want to shortchange that process.
No.
So I'm trying to make a distinction between the two.
And I, I think it's incumbent upon Legislative Services, or the Planning Commission, whoever is having the applicant before us to say, to clearly let them know, you have X amount of, of minutes, you know, give or take a little bit to present, and then the council will respond. So I think once we start those expectations, again, they are guidelines. And to your point too, I don't think we should ever put time limits on public hearings. You know, that is.
I agree with you completely.
So except a start time, maybe a start time.
Yeah, we should all start on time, yeah.
Yes, but other than that, because we do have robust conversations, or we have, we don't know how many people are going to be in there. Thank you for your feedback.
And just a clarification point, I think your point about the staff, and it's also going to be an education process.
Absolutely.
So, so the applicants just need to kind of understand that, and if they, particularly, particularly if they have attorneys, with all due respect, they should know that.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, Matt Trolinger, Ward two. So I, I really like it. I think we all know this is aspirational, and as we kind of develop it, we're going to get better at doing estimates. I mean, we're just starting this process. One thing I think it's helpful for is it's respectful for the folks that come in and are presenting, because they have an assigned time, right, that they can look forward to. And I know sometimes the order of business can get a little bit jumbled, just because there's a lot going on. But if they know, I've got to bring my game, and like Councilman Jenkins was saying, and I need to present this in this allocated time, we might have more focused discussion, and it's respectful for, especially when we have many different things on the agenda. Everybody knows they're going to have their time, and it's, it's more incumbent on us to allow that to take place. And Madam Mayor, I, I like what you say about not putting a restriction on the public comment, but I still think we should, I mean, my thought is allocate time towards it within the agenda, because otherwise, I don't know if it's a subconscious thing or not, but you kind of, you kind of gloss over it, because there's no, there's no time here for it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We go from 7:10, 7:15, just as an example. Not to limit it, but to still allow for it, even just organizationally and respectfully.
Acknowledge it.
Right, right.
Absolutely. That's a great point on that.
I think it's great.
Yeah, there you go. It's all up to you now, Mr. Manuel.
No, I would just say that, you know, I think that we maybe should put a disclaimer, because if I went to this agenda on, say, Saturday morning and saw consent agenda will be discussed at 6:25, and, you know, we'd be five minutes, and I come back and I'm, I show up at 6:25, and we've blown straight past it saying that these are, you know, loosely based times, and that we recommend that if you do have a, an issue that you're interested in, to please note that these times aren't hard and fast, that they, they do fluctuate as the agenda fluctuates.
Mr. Town Clerk, would you be able to put a disclaimer for the times on the agenda?
I heard. Yeah, we absolutely could. The factor of public comment, though, is one of those things that, once we get to that, there's absolutely no way to gauge, and so everything after that's arbitrary anyway. Practice has shown that we haven't seen very much public comment at work sessions, but that's still impossible to guarantee. Legislative Services has tried to predict in the past how long certain elements would go, and been dead wrong. We thought things would be easy, and they were not, and we thought things would be more difficult than they were not. So we're learning you, and that takes a little bit of time. But as far as being able to put a disclaimer, that's, that's not a problem at all.
And looking at this, as Councilwoman Bryant Ward had pointed out about the motion for a close meeting, that really literally is 30 seconds instead of 7:15 to, because it's just a motion. We're not discussing anything else on that. It's just a motion which will be as quickly as somebody can read it. But for public comment, if it had said, now, of course, we're putting in a ordinance in there, which wasn't, we amended, so public comment maybe could have said 7:15, so that we acknowledge that.
Something else that I, in the conversation I had with the clerk of the commissioners, was that when they were in person, they could gauge these meetings, which would be two, three hours long, so that their presenters could be there at a particular time, and it was easier when they were in person. When it became entirely virtual, it was still kind of easy to gauge that. But once they got into hybrid meetings, it became much more complicated, and that's why the plan, that's why the county commissioners don't do this anymore. But we can probably figure it out and see if we can make it work all the same.
So if it is the will of the council for the next, we can say two months, three months, we can test this out, or we can even do it till the end of the year, and make it a clean cut. January 1st, we're either going to this, back to, you know, continue this, or we will not do this again. Is that okay with the council? Are you okay with the next four or five months doing this?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's try this. So we're going to test you there, Mr. Town Clerk, and see how, how well you do. You will be graded on your effort. All right, that closes that discussion. Next is La Plata Community Foundation appointments. And before we get into that, I'm actually going to have one of the applicants come on down here. Jen, did you know that? Jen, did you know that? Yeah, come on. You can just, okay, and to push the button very lightly on this. We have had vacancies or not active members, I should say, on our community foundation. Their terms have expired and we were seeking people to fill these terms so that we have a viable community foundation. And Jen's name came up a lot, so that's a good thing. So I would like you to take an opportunity to introduce yourself to our council. What brought you here? How long have you been here? What you do, all that good stuff. So welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Jennifer Vorm and I have been in La Plata since June of 2019. So I got here and then we had COVID, so I'm still learning the town of La Plata. What brought me here is my husband is active duty Navy. So he was stationed at the Naval Research Lab and is just moving to Pax River. So I'm really excited we get to stay here for another three years at least. And what I do is I'm both a bookkeeper and a financial analyst. I, right now I'm self-employed with Libra Financial Services, that's the name of my company. And I really just enjoy the town of La Plata. I think it's a nice, small community and we've really enjoyed living here.
So you're talking to military, 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 military wife and a very huge supporter of the military. So we understand where you're coming from and you are, you would be representing or you're the appointee from the La Plata Business Association. So that's where you would be coming in. And you know what? I'm going to even put you in the hot seat a little bit more here, military wife. You understand this. Any questions for Jen?
No.
Okay.
Good question, but thank you. I mean, this is frankly exciting to have citizens actively engaged in the community. And I don't want to preach, but, but it, but it certainly helps to have our citizens engaged because the town government can't do everything. And so it has to come up from the bottom up, not top down. So thank you.
And thank you for being part of the right service too.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, now, Steve, we-
Okay. This is on our agenda.
He tied the first shot and I'm going to say, go Army.
And, you know, go Air Force. All right. Thank you, Jen. I appreciate it. So tonight I bring to you a list of three volunteers that have indicated that they would like to serve on the community foundation under the Class A Director, Martha Vess for the town of La Plata. She will be, she follows Bob Alafont, Karina, Kevin, and she has indicated that she would be able to serve in this capacity. Jen, of course, under Class B Director for the, representative for the La Plata Business Association. And Class D, Melissa Deo, she works with Maryland Partners Bank. A little bit about her history, right now she's on vacation, so good for her. A little bit of a background with her. She is a military wife, Air Force. And she has lived in the community for 21 years on and off. They were stationed elsewhere a couple times and she has come back. She has worked as a CPA for Murphy &amp; Murphy over at Community Bank of the Chesapeake. She was their accountant there. She worked for a national nonprofit as their accountant and right now she is with Maryland Partners Bank and she would fill the Class D Director. We would keep on Class C Director Sandy Washington until that position can be filled. And Class E Director Margaret Stephens until that can be filled. And all three coming before us this evening have met the criteria of their specific class and most importantly, they are willing to serve on the board. So with that, I would like to make a, I would like to make a motion to accept Martha Vess, Jen Vorm, and Melissa Deo to fill the Class A, B, and D Directors respectively on the community foundation board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Great news.
So the Class A, B positions had to be appointed by the town treasurer according to the bylaws or am I mistaken?
I'm getting a note from-
No.
That they shall be appointed by the La Plata Town Council.
Okay.
And it just historically has been someone in our finance office for whatever reason that happens.
Okay.
And Class B was La Plata Business Association President was fine with this. He had, I had called him personally and he said that was okay. And Class D.
Do you have the bylaws? Can you read the, the appointments, who the appointments can be made by again? Just for my-
The Class A Director shall be appointed by the La Plata Town Council. Class B Director shall be appointed by the La Plata Business Association as long as such association exists in good standings, good standing and exercises its right of appointment. And at any time that such, that such association does not exist in good standing or does not exercise its right of appointment, within 60 days after written notice from the board to do such, to do so, such Class B shall be appointed by the town council. Class C Director shall be appointed by the Director of the Charles County Department of Social Services. Class D shall be employed by a bank or other similar financial institutions, having headquarters or branch office within the town of La Plata. The fifth Director and any additional Directors shall be Class E Directors and Class D Directors and Class E Directors shall be elected by the affirmative vote of a majority of the Class A, B, and C Directors.
So A, B, and C have to, and that's fine. A, B, and C will have to do that, but nomination has come forward. So I withdraw my motion right now. Can I with, should I withdraw about Class D because we don't have the right to appoint her? It has to be appointed by A, B, and C if you read it correctly or if I interpreted it correctly. Last line.
The Class D Director shall be employed by a bank or similar. The fifth Director or any additional Director as provided in the bylaw shall be Class E Directors. Each Class D Director and Class E Director shall be elected by the affirmative vote of a majority of A, B, and C.
So I will have to withdraw or I will withdraw that motion and I will make another motion that we accept Martha Vess, Class A, and Jen Vorm, Class B, to be appointed to, to serve, I should say, to serve on the community foundation board. Do I have a second?
Well, for my previous second, I make a new second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Mr. Town Clerk, you're going to have to do Robert Rules of Order training, but no further discussion.
All right. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Jen. So the first order of action is going to be, I guess, A, B, and C and E getting together to vote in D. Oh, my goodness. That's so, you're off and running. So thank you very much. And, and please feel free to reach out to, I'm going to say Kelly. She has all the answers or someone here on staff that, if you have any questions. Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, Michelle, for the clarification. All right, let's see how we're doing 6:38. We are, we are doing well. All right, matters of information, Hawthorne Yards, Mr. Manuel?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, including your agenda packet, it was a communication from Steve Scott, who represents Hawthorne Yards, more specifically Hawthorne Development LLC. Just in part, his letter states, "On behalf of the applicant, we hereby respectfully request the deferral of further proceedings in this case so that we are able to consider and establish a resolution of the enclave issue raised in the letter of the Maryland State Office of Planning with respect to this case and to the proposed annexation for the hub project."
All right, thank you very much. Do we have any discussion needed on this?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I saw research enclave and I don't get it. How, how is that? What is the enclave with regards to-
Be a better question for our planning director. I know Jay, our town attorney, did a lot of research and of course, the Department of Planning, State Department of Planning found that there was issue where we would have an, basically you're creating an island because they would be, they would be a county property surrounded by a town boundary. So it, it would not be legal. So it's much more involved than that. I've oversimplified the matter, but I can get you a more detailed description and anyone else that wants one.
Okay, so I did read it. I just, I couldn't visualize it, so thank you.
Hey, hey, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. When, when somebody applies for an annexation, there's an application process, is that something that's on the application or is that something that the staff would check prior to moving forward?
Yeah, typically you would by the applicant and, you know, there were a lot of, it's a lot of moving parts. But it's typically something that, of course, the applicant wouldn't want to create an enclave because it would provide a problem with their application. I think it was brought up and, you know, a lot of these, not so much Hawthorne Yards, but the hub has sort of morphed over the years and included properties and maybe some properties have dropped out from that proposal. So it was sort of a moving target at one time and I think they've come to a more specific property now that they're looking at. So I think they're trying to work through and there may be a sequencing that needs to take place. For example, Hawthorne Yards may need to be annexed first if that's the will of council. And if not, then, you know, the hub has other things that, other considerations that they're going to have to look at.
So that, that leads to my, I guess my, you anticipated my other question is so, is it maybe a poor choice of words? So are they, are they interrelated if one doesn't happen, the other does or vice versa? I'm, I'm a little fuzzy about that.
Yeah, I think they would, if one doesn't happen, you know, just as far as the town proper currently Hawthorne Yards, I think, since more central to the town than the hub. The hub is more, I guess, out on the fringes, if you will. But yeah, there's, obviously it's more detail to this than, than I'm ready to explain tonight. But yeah, I can provide you an answer.
But, but at the end of the day, you know, the council is the quote final approval authority and-
Correct.
So we have to make our decision based upon that particular annexation request.
Right.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Town, I mean, Mr. Town Manager here, I need to make a motion to defer this indefinitely until the applicant can come back with proof that there is no enclave. So with that said, what motion am I making? Is it, when they came up, when we deferred their resolution back on July 18th? And I don't know what resolution that was. I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, I don't know if the clerk could help out on that. You said it was July 13th?
July 18th.
18th, sorry.
After the public hearing, we had indicated that we were not going to, we were going to table this. So now I think I have to make a motion or someone has to make a motion that we defer this resolution until, indefinitely until the applicant comes back.
We just accept their letter as they wrote it? They won't come back until they resolve the issue? That's what they say in their letter.
Yes, that's exactly what we will be saying, but we have to make it a formal motion.
They just ask for a deferral, they don't give any kind of end date.
22. Okay, so I make a motion that we defer Resolution 22-03 Hawthorne Yards indefinitely until the applicant can come back before the mayor and council and establish the resolution of the enclave issue.
Second.
Did I say table? I said, did I defer? Did I say table? Are we tabling or defer? Are you asking a question? Yes. We are deferring it. I think there's a difference.
There is a difference.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So then it would be incumbent at some point in time for the applicant to notify-
Legislative Services.
Legislative Services, they, they've resolved it and they have documentation that they've resolved it and then therefore at some point in the future, another, would the record be open or, or would we then schedule some kind of discussion item on the matter?
And, Mr. Manuel, please correct me if I'm wrong, but then when they come back before us, we will then vote on the here, public hearing. And their request was to annex in the 52 acres on-
But that assumes then that they have satisfied the enclave issue to the satisfaction of the Maryland Department of Planning and the staff and our, and our town attorney?
Yes, when it comes before us again, all of those should have been resolved.
But there'll be documentation to that effect.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Correct. So I have made, I made a motion. I have a second. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to 5.2, which is Ordinance 22-15, which is, you should have received that in your, oh wait a minute, sorry, let's go 22, I'm all over the place. Resolution 22-20, which is our police replacement radio purchases. Mr. Manuel?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, Resolution Concerning La Plata Police Department Replacement Radio Purchases for the Purpose of Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter Into a Contract Purchase Agreement for the Purchase of Motorola Mobile Radios, Portable Radios, and Additional Parts and Accessories for the La Plata Police Department.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 22-20?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-20, police radios.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think we had a good discussion.
Actually, the amount was a little less than what's here. This would be a great consent item, right?
Yes, it would be. Wonderful. Any other further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, which brings us to 5.2, which is Ordinance 22-15. Have that one?
Yeah. Just trying to figure out what I have to read.
Madam Mayor, Town Council, Chapter 194, Ordinance Concerning Chapter 191 Zoning Ordinance for the Town of La Plata, for the, for the purpose of, by amending Chapter 191, Section 191-28, Code of the Town of La Plata. If you'd like me to read it further, I can. Section 1, being enacted by the council of the Town of La Plata, that Chapter 191, Section 191-28, Table 3 of the Code of the Town of La Plata, 1998 edition, as amended, be and is hereby amended to read as follows. That's it.
And this is only for introduction. So if you, does council have any questions on this? All right, we will see this again for consideration of adoption. All right, we're good with that one. Brings us to public comment. If anybody would like to speak, we ask that you state your name, whether you live within the incorporated town limits, and please try to keep your comments to three minutes. Do I have anybody on line that would like to speak or anybody in person? Hearing none, we will go to, we have a reason to go into closed session this evening. Do I have someone who would like to make a motion?
I make a motion, we go into closed session immediately following this meeting, under State Government Article 3-305B-10, to discuss public security. If the Town Council of La Plata determines that the public discussion went to contribute the risk of public, public safety and deployment of fire and police services and staff and development of emergency plans.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? I will do a roll call. If you are in favor of going into, into closed session, please indicate by saying aye, otherwise nay. Councilman Goldsmith?
Aye.
Councilman Trolinger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Mayor James is aye. And do I have a motion to adjourn at, wait a minute, at six fifty? Second. All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you. What a very productive meeting tonight. Okay, stick around for our closed session if you guys want to go ahead and take a quick break. Then we can do that. We come back seven o'clock. You guys good with that?
Don't give me a chance, but wait.
You don't need?